Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll bring this meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order. First item is public comment. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I would appreciate if the board used the microphone there so that everybody can hear. It was instituted at one time. This is not the first time that I've discussed this matter. If there's something that is not used here, then I'll start naming the names here of the commissars that I cannot hear, even though I'm sitting quite close. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome. Anybody else? Public comment?
Okay, approved agenda with additions. You've got one, two, three additions. I support Mr. Chairman with those additions. I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik and a second by Commissioner McBride. And the additions are to approve a change order for Williams School. The next addition is to authorize the 47th Annual Fish Fry for Reenie River, First Nations. And that's for attendance by board members. And the last addition is an update for Voyager's electronics regarding the TV PBS programs from the org translator. So, is there any discussion on that? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Approved, proposed. That one's there. Approved minutes of May 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question about the minutes. I think we made society activity on Friday night and approved that motion, but it doesn't show up on the minutes, I believe. Is that correct?
I think...
I believe we did do that. Should we just... okay, I will check that and I will...
Didn't you make the motion?
I don't remember if I did or not.
I'll look through my notes.
You're testing my memory, Commissioner.
You know what? It was on the agenda, and so I'm sure we did. Yeah, and I will correct those minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you for finding that.
Without a correction, I approve the minutes.
Okay. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Nordby to approve the minutes, cited by Commissioner McBride. Any further discussion on that?
Three of us can't remember anything.
Yeah, well, probably five.
Probably were like it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Personnel business. Notice of hire of Treasury Assistant. Bob?
I'd like to introduce Cammy Terry-O that started a week ago Monday as our new Treasury Assistant. She's getting her feet wet real quickly with the tax collection.
So, Cammy, has Bob warned you about when people like me come in to pay my taxes? He has a trade deal for that. Well, welcome.
Is he being a good boss? He's not being mean, okay?
So far.
He's just being nice 'cause you're here.
Timing then is good for her to start, huh?
Timing is good. She's learning the tax end of it, and then, of course, she was warned about settlement at the end of it.
Well, welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
You have a great boss.
I need a signature when you get that, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob.
That's just a notice of hire, right?
Correct.
Okay. Financial business. Claims.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping to verify it. April 25th claims and approved, Corso's claims.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Nordby. Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. First quarter 2017 county budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I prepared the quarterly budget review. I mailed out a copy. It's kind of a large document. It's first quarter, so there's not a lot of activity that's gone on. We didn't have a lot of tax collections yet. But I did go through the process of reviewing it, which is good for me because, you know, I'm new and then I can learn a little bit more about the budget process. If we looked down at the percentages for general... What we're looking for is to be about 25% of the budget because it's a quarterly review. So, some of the things that I noticed, if you look at administration, we're at 36% of our budget. Some of that was due to our retirement, and no additional funds have been... We haven't moved any budget item numbers around. We haven't taken anything from contingency yet because we're just going to wait and see how the year goes out. So, if we look at the general revenue fund, I believe that everything, to me, looks like it's in line. And in terms of expenditures, we also... One of the things that you'll see on all of the fund balances when there's the administration is we have had three payrolls in March. So, in essence, there was that one extra payroll, so everybody's over just slightly. Now, when we do that second quarter budget review, that's when we're really going to be able to have some more details and see how we're doing. And I have been watching those very closely. If we turn to page two on the report, we will be making... That's the Road and Bridge Fund. We were over a little bit in administration, and that, of course, was due to the extra pay period. One of the things that is coming out is we've got some retirements, and so we will have some extra expenses to pay out those vacation and sick leave and any accrued vacation and things like that. However, I think that we're going to be fine with that because when we... In the revenue side, when we did the tax forfeited apportionment, we were budgeted for $200,000, and the actual apportionment was quite a bit higher due to, you know, land sales income, and that was $244,000. So, I think that those are going to wash each other out just fine.
This is where our reserve point is a little bit.
Yes, the fund balance for the Highway Department is lower than historically it has been, although it's about the same as it was last year at this time. So, we're watching that fund fairly closely. We're going to... We're working on getting some help with the accounting system and things like that, and I'm hopeful that by the end of the year, things will be turned around a little bit and we'll get some, I believe, some projects closed out that need to be closed out.
I think what it is, we've got some large receivables out there that have been...
That's what I'm thinking, too. And when you look at the middle of that sheet, when it looks at the quarter one budget comparison, you know, our actual numbers are lower than what are... They were a year ago from today. And also, last year, we were using fund reserves of $682,000, where actually, we have a positive balance to our fund reserves. So, already this quarter, I think we're showing some improvement, and we'll just keep tracking that. Like I said, there really isn't a whole lot to report on, although if you go to page three, I just wanted to point out in Environmental Services, I have created a new line item for the fire, so we have had expenses from the fire at the end of the quarter of $152,000. That obviously was not a budgeted item because we didn't plan for the fire. But we've had revenues, which were insurance proceeds, of $302,000. So, you know, we're still have not used all of the revenues that we've got from the insurance claims. And I will talk with Teresa next week, and maybe we will make an adjustment to the budget to account for that, just so that our numbers are for the year are going to go over. Because already, you can see, the total fund is at 31%, and 32... 31% for revenues, or for expenses, and 32 for revenues. And that number is still going to continue to be over because of that other large adjustment.
It's essentially just a pass-through fund, really.
It really is. It is... We're hoping it's going to be a wash for revenues and expenses.
Did they cover event bill for the cat to have a checkup after the fire?
I don't believe that was part of the county budget.
I looked it over myself.
Although, it seems pretty important. So, and then, when we... Most of the other funds, there's not a lot of activity. We're... This month, we will do the transfers now that we've got some revenues coming in from tax collections from the different departments. So, there's certain funds that will move from one department to another based on the budget that was approved. So, those are going to take place this month. So, by next month, we're really going to have a... Or, I'm sorry, by the next end of quarter, we're going to have a lot better idea of, you know, where we're at and how we're doing with the budget versus actual. So, not a ton to report on this type. It's a fun project for me, too, just because I'm getting familiar with the budget, and it helps me, so...
Well, I opened it up at the first page, and I saw all the red ink at the bottom. Forsenly thought. This is very understandable. I can understand it, so you're doing a great job.
Okay, I worked on that. And there's some tweaking on that report, but we'll get it where we need to be. Yes.
I think it's true.
Good. Good. So, Jen, is there... Any place we need to have comparables at all? Something we could compare with 16 or 15 sometimes?
The only comparison is on the total, and that's this... We're just comparing the first quarter of last year to the first quarter of this year.
All right.
And that's just on the total. I could maybe add some others.
That's okay. I like this format.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Approved sponsorship of fiscal year 2018 Minnesota Trails Assistance Grant and Aid Program.
Sponsorship, Mr. Chairman, I will move on that sponsorship with the grant in aid. Granted, aid trails.
Got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
Second, I mean, this is routine. We do it every year.
Yep, second by Commissioner Pavlik. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Request 2018 IRRB funding.
Oof, can't be that quick, I think.
Motion by Commissioner Pavlik.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Poo recording of the annual employee dishonesty and faithful performance bond. Pam, I believe this is you.
Yes. We just...
Dishonesty, doesn't sound good. We're...
We haven't recorded... It looked like we recorded the bonds every year up to 1980, and then one in 83, and none since. You know, I started in 85.
Well, that tells me we don't get it.
We haven't done it, so never thought of it. But Jenny found the statute, and so we thought we would record it, get a court motion, then record it.
Is that something you need? Something we need?
Well, the statute says it should be recorded, so we probably need to record it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Nordby. This is something that's done every year?
Yes, it sounds like it. They used to record them individually, but I think we have a blanket on, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
We look that individual.
No, I have kind of a copy of what you were given, and then we thought we would attach a court motion to it.
Take a word...
That's 1983, look who the...
Current level is still...
Current level.
Yeah.
Now, we've had a few changes since.
One of the years... Yeah, 75 and 27 of them.
Is that...
Some one year it was two. I don't know. I haven't...
Is that a reflection on government, though, the fact that we can go, what, 40 years or more without... And no one even notices? Not, I mean, on the other end, not our...
So, obviously, through, since it was recorded back in the 80s till now, I mean, the county individuals have it covered, it's just not been recorded.
Right, apparently.
Well, I guess we didn't need it.
I don't think so.
But I don't think... Is there cost through M.C.I.T. for this bond?
Yeah.
We've always had the bond. I talked... One of the requirements of the statute when we appoint people... Appointed and elected officials all need to have at least $25,000 bond through M.C.I.T. We have a $50,000 bond on each one that's a blanket. M.C.I.T. informed me that some of the counties record it as required by statute, others don't, but I thought, you know, we might as well go ahead and record it. It's a simple process. It doesn't cost the county anything. We have had the coverage over the years. It just hasn't been recorded.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes. Mr. Herman. Is KEDA under this bonding program by statute, area in as much as its taxpayer funded primarily? And it's also a partial entity of the county, or does it apply only to the counties? As you read it.
This applies to...
I'm not asking for your legal opinion. I'm asking which your best understanding is at this point in time. Because $50,000 doesn't appear to be very much, if that's a part of the statute.
The statute requires $25,000, and it's for only elected or appointed officials. And those are defined by statute.
Only elected or appointed? Okay, but they have to be appointed by the county? How about joint? Is there any coverage at all? Or is the statute exclusively for the county itself here, rather than all these joint areas that we get involved in?
The statute is 382.1, and if you'd like me, after the board meeting, I can give you a copy of that statute.
Could you give me a copy, please?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion in there?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you, Pam.
Approved cancellation of May 16th county board meeting due to lack of business.
Oof.
Motion by Commissioner McBride.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nordby. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Approved revised county board summer... Approved revised county board summer 2017 meeting schedule.
Oof.
So, heard by Commissioner Pavlik, second by Commissioner McBride. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. On to the additions. First one, approved change order for Williams School Foundation stabilization. Give me out of the amount of $16,000, $700.
We got to get these two antique people out here.
They're antique archaeology.
Yeah. That's what I feel like lately.
They're kind of historic. I know that.
Yes. Want to throw a little more in here? Do you want to add them all?
Yeah, okay. Thank you. You got it.
Sure.
Oh, you can't get enough of that.
Pictures and everything.
I took and drew them the first time. And that's all before this time went up with a half.
That speaks with all his words.
It starts to speak.
How do you like the cover picture?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That give you confidence? Hey, Wayne, are you talking about this? That's a classic.
That's not from 1909.
This is glow ox. Gary did that. When you went to school, I think.
Pretty nice one.
I thought we'd do is quickly walk through the photographs, and I'll tell you a little bit about what we're looking at when you... When we're doing this. I've seen all this, so maybe I'll just cut some around. You guys will just pass the ring around to me, but you can see what we're doing. The first photograph is looking at the entrance from the interior of the building. And the second photograph is the... One of the cloakrooms on the north side of the building. The third photograph is a cloakroom on the south side of the building. The fourth photograph, you can see two good-looking guys standing right in the middle there. They look familiar. I know them. And we're actually standing on the concrete puddings that ran down the center of the building. Those were original? These are original. Wow. And, of course, we didn't know what was under there until we pulled the floor. What year was the building in? 1906. Pretty amazing. Yeah, I think you were about this tall. Yeah, yeah. Just getting ready for school. But anyhow, on the next picture, then, you'll see the... Another shot of the foundation, and that's the center foot. That's the center footing. The next photograph, you'll see the center puddings, and you'll see part of the problems on it, and you'll see that that footing is broken. And that's what's causing all the heaving. The drainage out there is terrible. When he pulls the floor off with a swimming pool underneath the floor. So, it's pretty awful. And you can see on the following photograph, there's a big white bucket in the back of the photograph. Someone dug a hole in the back of the building, and Jamie just used that as a sump to pump the water out of the... Out of the building. That's on that. And he left the building open all weekend for last Friday. We were out there yes, yesterday, and it was still dark. The water was gone, but it was still pretty dark. The next photograph, you can see the north building, or the north wall of the building is pretty dark, with the furnace in the back. There's a picture of the furnace with the furnace platform rotting away. And then, the last photograph on that series is the furnace itself. The furnace, what was it?
Wood stove.
It's a wood stove with the sleeve rotting away. So, there's about that much distance, so you can touch that sleeve and not burn it.
His wood get burned, that's why, you know?
And then, the exterior pictures. You can see the outside. This is from the front of the building. You can see the outside. You can see the beams that he's already got in there to raise the building. And we walk around the south side of the building, the east side of the building. There's the hole that was dug for drainage that turned out to be in the statue. And then, we go to the north side of the building. So, basically, what was found was there's been so much water in there, and so much heaving, that the interior foundation had just broken. So, nothing's fixed. So, we're looking at that overrun, I think. Yeah. And there's... On the back of the page is his estimate. Thanks, Ed. And what he proposes to do, Wayne, is put in a three-foot slab that's going to run right down the center of the building. It can be 10 inches deep with rerun. So, that should take care of that interior portion of the building. I talked with Greg Goff, the, our consultant that's putting the other work in, and he he agreed with everything that we were proposing to do. He said it's going to be fine in terms of our long-range plans for national emergency. Your contractor does excellent work. I mean, that's... So, you know, without that improvement, we're not going to... It's never going to last. Well, the second part, the second part of that bid, we already talked a little bit about, Wayne, that's landscaping to get the water away. We'll keep it a poopy. So, wouldn't do a second part?
And also, for to keep water away, we'd put eaves troughs on.
Well, we thought of that, but that wouldn't be... Not original. Not original.
It's not original.
So, what we're going to do is run a hose underneath. We'll put a drain tile, and then we're going to run it all the way to the ditch. Now, if we keep that drain tile right to the top, we should almost have a foot grade going down to drain any water that does get under there.
Can you find this photograph?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, if you look right here on the bottom. Originally, the outside wood went all the way to the ground. That obviously rotted off. So, what the contractor's proposing, did you see this little indentation right where it goes under the building?
Yep.
He's going to put, what'd he say, one inch hole in there?
With the cement up.
With the cement on the outside? That one, we could fill dirt right up to it, which is going to give us between nine and 10 inches of grade, which is going to run off. So, we'll get...
It's got not... It's not a lot of runoff, but it's going to be enough, I think, to handle.
And then, in the back of the building where that hole is...
That's my question.
We're going to put a sump in there.
Yeah, but eaves troughs, it's not original, but yet you can put a metal roof on.
Well, that, matter of fact, can be taken up, you know?
Ed, couldn't you check to see if for restoration purposes, that eaves troughs can be put on there themselves to save the building? I mean, you are... We are using modern building material in there, so...
Yeah, but it's not original, Wayne, so they wouldn't know. You know, I got to tell you, you can ask, Wayne, but the problem is, it's probably not going to be granted. We went through that in the Corso's. Yeah. We can't punch a nail or do a wall here without...
Yeah, I know, but I...
They're hung up on originality in what they want you to do. It's not to say that you can't do it, but it has to be a last or final option. Right. If there's no other alternative, then no, then no, good sir.
I would agree with Mr. Schroy, at least we could ask.
Well, I do not.
For preservation of the building, then.
Yeah, and I think, because otherwise, it's going to be a continuing... Even if you have it running away, the rain comes down, it's water's up on the side.
Doesn't hurt for him to say no.
No, doesn't hurt to ask, at all.
Do you know, but it's like it's almost a low area in there. You know, it's really tough. And when we came across, you know, looking at rebuilding this center beam, when the drain tile came in place to go to the ditch, that was critical. And we knew we were going to have to get rid of that water somehow. And also, what he suggested, Jamie, and I probably agreed with him at the time, but putting an extra lower pump in there so that we can pump out too. So, because the drain tile's got to be so high in the top of the turf, we'll just keep it under the ground when we leave, but... And then, gradually drop because there's not a lot of slope there. And we might have to put a pump in there, and if we do, once a year, I'm going to, during the winter, probably have to go there or somebody, and unplug, and...
You need electricity first.
We have electricity.
You have a couple of electricity, yeah. Of course, you know, there is a... Well, on that center beam, that center beam is going to be the same depth as the outside footing, correct?
Well, he was talking about putting down in the door footing, but we never got into detail of how deep it was going to go. But he was talking about how he was going to make that footing for one center beam instead of two of them, and make it a better footing so that it'll hold it. I mean, the rest of the footings on the outside look perfectly fine. It's just that center one.
But how deep are the outside footings?
You know, I couldn't tell you that.
Because I'm wondering if you should look at... Is that... But you don't know now if the center footing is as deep as the outside footings.
I have no idea.
Because I would think that that would have, maybe have some effect, too. If that one's going to float more than the outside footing, that would affect the floor, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing is, is if it would give you eaves troughs, even if you have tile around it, you get a spring thaw, and it runs down in there and freezes, and all your... I mean, it's all going to be froze up anyhow, so... So, I mean, they're going to have trouble with the water on that respect anyhow, but eaves troughs, get it away from the building and everything.
Yeah, they should away. And that's why we're going to crown it, you know? And that's why we were talking about on the sidewalks, putting that styrofoam cement, then we can get some dirt in there, crown everything, so it gets the flows away from the building instead of towards...
Another thing about putting that ditch in there, that's going to take all the ambient water that's standing there and drain it to the ditch as well, so we're not going to have...
Yeah, water from the entire lot running toward the building.
So, that's going to...
But you may have trouble if you had a pump in there. That, like, save the water, make it come in, and the pump kick on, and it might be frozen anyhow.
Yeah, you know, pumps, they didn't thrill me about the pump idea, but it's trying to get the right pitch because, you know, the depth of what we can go down and the angle, and if we're only six inches on 55 feet, that's probably okay, but it's not a lot. and if we're only six inches on 55 feet, that's, that's probably okay, but it's not a lot, it's, it's not cool, let's put it that way, but it's better than nothing. But the, the lower we get, the lower we gotta be in the building, and the less pitch we're having, that's the problem with that, you know, and so...
And with, and with the overrun, it's still less than what the next lower bidder was, and less than the amount that we had approved of $50,000, so...
Exactly, you know.
Kevin, I was just gonna say, Kevin was with me when we were doing stuff, the sport and all stuff, and so were you, Terry. They, they, they hold the ultimate hammer, the funding. Their way or the highway, so, I, I, I would do this, hopefully, I mean, obviously, eaves would, I think, solve the problem, but if we don't get, make sure that he's doing it with that in mind, that there may not be any eaves at all.
Right, you can't photo, doctor, one of the photos and put some eaves troughs on.
Maybe you can blend them in so nobody notices, Wayne.
Well, because they're gonna come up and photograph the building, that's what you have to do before you fire it.
Put them on out, didn't he?
No, 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 but I mean, can't you go back to a, to a, to a 1920 photo and find one that's, getting some by eaves troughs on it, and said it was in the 1920s?
Well, double it in, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's it.
Motion.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik to approve. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Squay. Any further discussion?
One, a question, when can the contractor get started?
As soon as we call. As soon as we call. We're kinda holding him up right now, because, you know, he had enough things to keep going down there for, but he said, I got a couple days, and either we're gonna do it, or we can't.
Well, it's probably gonna be a 10 split vote here, so let's see, we'll have a drum roll and see what happens.
Yeah.
Exciting, I'm glad you're doing it.
Any further discussion?
Also, Mr. Chair, you were at the meeting, and a couple of the ladies that were, have been pushing for this request, so is that just a statement?
I think a lot of people are, because, you know, it is the last one left in the county.
Yep.
Piece of history, that's for sure.
I mean, it gets raised, it's leveled on the outside, it's, it's coming along.
Almost as old as that poking orange guy.
Look at these pictures at Orange River, you'll see the ABCs on the east wall, Perry did that so he could remember the ABCs out there.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks for all the effort.
Thank you.
We, we gotta get the history back into the corner of the courthouse here.
Why don't we get a minute?
Let's have, we gotta have a meeting, I mean, we can get a little...
For the, uh...
Corner stone for the courthouse, for the next hundred, give me a call, and we'll get that, we'll get that set up. I can't retire until you guys do that, you know, so, if you wanna get rid of me, let's fund it. You wanna ride the Grand Rapids?
Well, you took me in Dunkin' Annoys, I had to find another ride home.
Yeah, we would've saved you.
Yeah, I know, I just...
Thanks, guys.
These are announcements for our heritage tourism meeting we're having on the 19th, so, you gotta be nice to Wayne now, and quit being mean to him.
You mean, I can't, you mean, I can't talk about him nor?
Not behind his back anymore.
Well, you're out of your office side for now.
Colonel goes out for him.
Thank you, let us know what you've been doing.
Okay, the, the next addition is to authorize the board to attend the 47th Annual Fish Fry for Rainy River First Nations Chief and Council on Friday, May 19th, at Rainy River First Nations powwow grounds as board activity. Motion by Commissioner, we try?
I'm sure you've done that.
Yep. Also, and such is consistent, that is condition, I guess. Second by Commissioner Squay. And, yeah, I've, I've gone to that a few times, uh, I think, I think you've gone to that, haven't you? Okay, yep, we've gone to it, but, uh...
I can just, I can teleport this, did you go last year, Ron?
No, I didn't.
It's a wonderful event, and it was, it's a way to build relationships with, with First Nations and Manitou, especially in this case. And this goes back to when the county supported them, when the DNR was pulling the sturgeon out of the river, right across from their hatchery, I mean, you know, it just didn't even make sense, and the county board took the site of, of First Nations at Manitou against the DNR, and, uh, we, you know, it opened, it opened those doors up, and the DNR saw the light and quit doing that, or, they, they didn't even, and not only didn't they notify the county, they didn't notify, of all people, you know, the tribal interests there, especially with the hatchery, they were trying to improve that, and what the DNR was doing was netting and restocking some, we don't, we don't even know where.
What are they restocking for?
It became quite an issue.
They're restocking for the Whiterth tribe over in the red lake.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, I've, I've gone to it the last few years, so...
But anyway...
Which was kind of ironic, but that is where the, the Whiterth band was, was getting the sturgeon to stop, to stop over there.
Well, Chief Leonard and the whole, the whole group there, they've been wonderful. And they do, they do appreciate it if, if you guys show them.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Um, next item is environmental service business. Dale. Point viewers for the Island View Resort project.
Yeah, we discussed this last week, and came up with some names, and I talked to Attorney Steve Schimon, and we need to find a couple other people because of the, the connection with East Coast Sanitary District and the project between Jerry and Dave Austin.
So, but the three that we selected in committee are the Avila group?
Yes, the ones that we, the ones that I'm bringing up today are Jay Mitchell, Steve Hunsweigner, William, William Wagner, and Cam Hardaway, and those are the ones that I would recommend, but I talked to all three of them, they're all three interested in doing it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second order. Sent by Commissioner Nordby. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Dale, when are they gonna, they're gonna be able to do that?
We're gonna do, I'm, I'm trying to line up for this Thursday.
Okay.
And I just gotta get a van, and I'm...
The timing is critical, because we need, that's the very first step.
So, these guys have done it before?
They have not, no.
These guys haven't done it?
No.
But when we did the first project, you know, it's so seldom you do this, the first, the first group we had, Heather, to do this, but we couldn't use people from the first group, because it's gonna do a different...
Oh, a different area.
Project area, so, but, you know, these are three credible people, and actually, I think Steve recommended most of them.
I do have one other thing I have to bring up, right, we did, last week, we set the public hearing on June 7th, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be too tight with that timing, I can't get this report done, have to delay it a week, so we gotta set, reset the public hearing on the 14th, or somewhere around there, a little later than the 15th, so it would be the week after, and that wasn't, I didn't realize that you weren't having a meeting next week, and just till a few minutes ago, so...
I think we got it on the 14th.
14th would be a Wednesday.
The reason, the reason being, if there's a hiccup, we got that extra day that...
Yeah, we bought it too, it was one extra day, so if we could reset that, it'd be great.
I'll move on that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik.
Move that to the 14th, that's for board reset.
I have a second.
Yep.
Second by Commissioner McBride. Discussion. Hearing none, all...
Rainier Community Building?
Rainier Community Building is filled up that day, we might have to go to the theater, not Rainier, not Rainier Community College.
Love to make sure we let everyone know.
Yep, I'll start advertising before the 20th of May here, so, I got about a week or so.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Short and sweet today.
Yeah.
First time for everything.
We're gonna get even later. Nobody gets respect.
Okay, next is the last edition that we have, the update from Whiter's Comtronics regarding over-the-air TV PBS programs from the ORS translator, which is shut down last week due to lack of funds.
Actually, we should, we should have added this, I mean, to your secretary, if it's a little... We still could, or something. Mr. Chair, before we go into this, I, I would make a motion to add, since we just received the, the stump of the Koochian County Historical Society for that meeting to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, I've just got a motion from Commissioner Pavlik to add selling heritage in a sense of place, um, Friday, May 19th, which is before our next 40, board meeting, uh, so, it just came to before us just a minute ago, so, uh, but Commissioner Pavlik is making a motion for the county board, uh, to attend that, and I need a second, I guess. Second by Commissioner Nordby.
I couldn't, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think I'll be able to make that, but I hope some commissioners can, because we're, we're talking here Monday, if you read the last paragraph, and support somebody either.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
No, we get...
Okay, I'll try to be short and sweet.
This is gonna happen.
Two-minute item, right?
Two-minute item. My name's Lee Hervey, I think all of you know me. Miniano's operated for 60 years, originally started in Virginia, to OR, our county, our county expanded it, the group in OR has been operating for the last, well, since it started, which is about 58, and we, you guys thought, oh, a few years ago, they went out of business, well, they're closed. Well, finally, they ran out of electricity, or running out of electricity, they pulled the plug last weekend, not this very last weekend, the weekend before. Of course, I went down there thinking it was a case of trouble, and we've been donating some time, because we get a channel off of, and I called the guy who manages it, and he said, "Well, I should've told you, we're broke." Well, I got ahold of a lot of people, including the people down there, and I said, "Well, give me 10 days, let me at least put a slide on and let the people know what's going on." Uh, they are getting a lot of information in Cook to help keep it going, and, uh, some of the major players in that area, uh, like the newspaper in, in Tower, he actually watched it, so he seen the slide, and went off there at his house. He wrote an editorial yesterday, I don't know what it was about, but trying to get support for the group. And I've gotten ahold of some of the other players, Mark Phillips, the Triple RB, they're willing to give a one-time bailout for like nine grand or so to help paint the tower, and it'll help a little bit for ongoing funding, and I asked the TV stations, which have basically used that tower to provide television, especially PBS up here, well, it doesn't provide all the television up here, but it provides PBS up here, and of course, the other three stations down there, and two of them were receptive of, you know, helping out some. Channel 8 felt, does anybody even watch it? Well, that kind of triggered a hair at my butt, you guys often ask, "Does anybody ever watch this TV?" Well, I put a slide on the air, and it's been on there for about a week, and today, I'm coming to you to kind of inform you what's going on, I would like to see PBS continue from Duluth, because I like, I watch it, I, it's good programming. But, uh, if OR goes down, we have no way to get it into this county. We have an alternative, we could get PBS out of Vermighi, but this is kind of a Duluth area, and, uh, I think, uh, that's the desires of this county, to keep the OR, well, to wanna get PBS up here anyway. So, anyway, making a long story short, you asked me some questions, and I'll give you my suggestions, and I'll try to keep it as sweet as possible.
First question is, how do we fix this?
Well, the, the, well, with putting the slides on the air, rather than just leaving it off the air, it's, it's kind of self-healing a little bit by itself, because Triple RB's getting involved, or there's a lot of people down there getting involved, and it's kind of, to a certain extent, fixing itself. Channel 8, which really gets a lot of viewers up here in donations, they, they were somewhat, "Well, does anybody even watch it?" Well, that's part of the reason I put the slide on their channel, the other two channels were willing to help out, but, uh...
Well, if they're getting donations, that must answer their own question.
Well, I think the editor in, at the Timber J felt that, you know, I thought that was part of what my money was, to help get it, not only just donate for programming. Well, I'm sure Channel 8 is getting a lot of, a lot of hammering, and of course, I'm the bad guy, but, uh, if I didn't put the slide on the air, we would have no way to get PBS unless we wanna get some funding involved, and it is really the taxpayers of Koochian County I feel that should do that, not a taxpayer.
We've always known you were the bad guy.
Yeah, I know. So, anyway, I'm here, I gave you a contact information, Triple RB is trying to help out, the guy down there, Kurt, is trying to help out, I've asked the stations to help out, PBS, uh, I didn't get much of a reception, I'd said, "Who even watches it?" Well, they're finding out, I think, I think, I don't know, but, anyway, I'm here, I guess my suggestion would be, and this is around PBS, is, because they don't wanna give any money at all to the group, but feeling of, if you'd wanna do a one-time donation of $500 to that OR group, with, uh, with the catch that PBS matches it, that's, I guess, about all, you know, if you, if you wanna do that, you could take it out of the TV budget, I wish you didn't, but you could, but other than that, that's all I'm, I'm suggesting.
Is that gonna short you in light bulbs or anything?
Well, yeah, yeah, no, I've got light bulbs for a couple of years, I've been there, I guess if the audience has got any input, maybe they can give some input to you, but that's, that's my presentation, short and sweet.
Where's St. Louis County on this? Do we know, do we know where St. Louis County is on this, or don't?
Uh, the fellow who manages down there, Kurt Glass, he does, and Mark, the county commissioner for OR area, he's really excited about it, and some of the people down there, let me tell you why I'm a belly out. It kinda, they ran out of money, at one time, they had a Verizon cellphone on their tower, right now, they only got one renter, and it's associated with government, big federal government, so there's not much income from that renter, a couple grand a year. Okay, their operating budget per year is about $12,000 a year to keep the tower going, that's with all maintenance and tower maintenance and everything, so it's about $1,000 a month to keep it going. Uh, Verizon used to be on the tower, but they built their own tower, so they got off the tower, and, uh, uh, let me think, the donations used to be funded through the townships, okay, that then, for some reason, and I don't know why they did this, they said to the townships, "Well, anybody who doesn't watch it can file to the township and will take you off, off the tax rolls." Well, everybody, even if they were watching it, they went off the tax rolls, so they don't have money coming from the townships that watch it, they don't have money from Verizon, donations have dried up, their one renter can't pay the annual money to keep it going, and of course, we do use it up here, but it's kind of not our, you know, financial responsibility, but it's a loss to this county. And it started 60 years ago, it's operated for 60 years, it's really a shame, all the people used to go by donations, it was the first thing that brought three and six up here, and, uh, it's been in business since about 1958, and, uh, and, and of course, when everything went digital, we got grants from the feds, we added to it, so now there's 10, 11 channels going out over our system, minus the four from PBS, and the slide kind of explains what went on, and, uh, I guess, a letter to PBS, and, uh, whatever you guys wanna do, but I'm here just to kind of inform you what's going on.
Thinking back to 1993, I think it was, when we, we came up with the right idea to shut down all Miniano, and during your season, just to see who was really watching it. And it's the only time, I had to go to town, it's the only time my recorder ever ran out of tape, that's, I'll never forget that. So we don't know who was watching it, then.
Well, and a lot of hunting cabins, a lot of ice fishing people watch it, a lot of boaters watch it, there is a lot of people, a lot of people on the Canadian side watch it, now, maybe if the newspapers here, the media's here some, if we could, if, if there's any support for this, if people wanna donate, they should send it to OR, not to this county, send it to OR in P O Box number one, and there, they need money to keep operating, they've run out of money.
So who, if we did $500, who are we actually sending it to?
We'd be sending it to OR Miniano 2, O P O Box 1-4.
Oh, right, you know, I read on, who wrote that kind of nasty letter there, I thought?
That was a manager of Channel 8, I'm the bad guy, really the bad guy.
That, to me, that was a little overboard, I'm sorry. We gotta, we have to defend you, since, since we, he's ours.
Well, if I had done nothing...
Well, that letter was not helpful, I mean, reading that, I mean, I just would've...
And that went out to everybody who talked to him, that letter went out to everybody. You know what's so irritating about me, they benefit the most from it.
Yes.
They got four packages that not only are OR, but come north, and to two cable systems, the cable system in Little Fork watches it, the cable system in Cook watched it, they got ahold of me, they're upset, and I told them, "Send OR a little money."
Well, I got, I have one other question, huh? If we send this $500, what assurances do we have that it's, they're gonna turn it back on and continue?
Well, if you do nothing, you know, I'm hoping it's gonna go back on again, but I would like PBS, I guess matching, you know how PBS always asks for matching funds?
Yep.
Well, attach your, if you wanna do $100, that's fine, a one-time donation, attach it to PBS, and maybe, we'll see what happens.
Still tax...
They're, they're dug in their heels, they don't wanna give nothing.
It's still taxpayer money, if we were to do this, we have to have some assurance or make it a contingency, that this money, this is not cashed unless...
Right.
It's restored, et cetera.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll guarantee you this, if you donate $150 to that OR group with matching funds from PBS, it'll be on for at least another month, and that'll buy some time.
They, they are turned back on right now, right? They, they are turned back on right now, right?
Nope.
Well, I thought, I thought they had turned on for like ten days or something.
Well, today's the tenth day.
Today's the...
Rob's got the gas, I'll introduce Rob, Rob works with me, he's one of my people who work for me. Bethany works with me. I'm sorry, Rob used to work with me. Scotty works for me.
Look what it did to him, you're, he's, he's... He used to be a normal person.
And I didn't hardly tell anybody about this meeting, because I didn't want to flood the meeting. You know, I did tell Jim, I did tell Rob, I did tell the people who work for me, and I did tell Kurt Glass. Kurt Glass is an instructor at Hibbing College, and he couldn't be here. He, I'm sure he would've liked to have been here, but he's basically for, on his own time donation, he donates the time to keep it going down there, Kurt Glass. So, and like I say, I didn't hardly tell anybody about this meeting, because I didn't want it to be just a yelling match.
If this, if this tower gets decommissioned, is that gonna affect any of the other channels? The other local program, programming that comes up here?
Not in this county, because I can pick them up at Captogoma, but in the summertime, when we have what's called atmospheric ducting, I like to pick it up from Ore, because I get a better consistent signal. I'm working with ABC and Fox to basically pipe their channels through Big Fork, Big Falls, and up to here. And if we do that, Fox will have two channels rather than just one, and I'm working on that other route for consistency. But right now, if they pull the plug on all the channels down there, the only thing that will stay off here is PBS.
Another question. Just the fund of county commissioners, we go from discussing garbage to historical things to TV.
Well, let me tell you a little about, if I can, I get a lot of calls on TV, I know a lot of people. The people who watch the TV the most are probably people, there's a lot of people in town that watch it, they're usually the elderly, they don't have money for cable, they don't have money for internet, they don't have money for satellite, and this is their only form of connection to the world. And it's a shame if it goes down.
I don't know my weight, but I can tell you, there are a number of my constituents that that's, that is what they have.
Yeah, I don't know how many, am I...
And the other thing to keep cable prices down, there's nothing better than a satellite overlooking the town with the basics, because it is an alternative.
Mr. Chairman.
What, what, second? Lee, if this, if we put this one-time, a hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars, whatever this, and per se, in thirty days, it doesn't work, but we can still provide Coochee County pulling through Vermige?
We could.
Is that, there an expense to us for that?
I need to put up antennas and cables on the tower, and we get to get permission from Vermige. And maybe PBS can stop us, because we're not in their, what's called an ADI, television stations are assigned for certain areas of the country, it's called an ADI, area of dominant influence. The area for the cable company up here happens to be the cable company, or the television stations in Duluth, we're in the Duluth ADI area of dominant interest. Okay, if I put Black Duck on here, I've got to somehow get permission from the powers that be in the broadcast industry to let Black Duck in here.
What would it cost us to pull it from Vermige?
Well, it would be a one-time cost, but I got to put an antenna on the falls, and what I would like to do is put a high antenna on the falls, thinking I can get that all the way from Vermige, because I want to pipe Fox up here through Big Falls. That'll add Fox to Big Falls, and they can get Black Duck in Big Falls. And the one-time cost would be, you're looking at, but it's a one-time cost, not a monthly cost, you know, the antenna's probably a thousand bucks for the time I get it here, another thousand bucks for the cable, plus our labor to do it, about three grand. You know, that's an alternative, but that takes time, nothing's been ordered. And I didn't want to order anything until I find out what's gonna happen to Ore. I'm hoping it goes. I like PBS out of Duluth. I don't like, the manager don't like me.
We'd feel better if I knew St. Louis County, we're putting out an equal share, too. I mean, I think that we can make a contingent of more.
Make a contingent, yeah.
And then the whole issue with...
Love raising some money.
With you, Lee, is, I mean, you've been working through Coochee County, not with, not with them at all.
Not at all. No, no, well, I do work for Ore, Miniano, too, we made, made that tower, we have nothing to do with St. Louis County. I'm only here kind of because you've lost it, you know. Really, the people that, you know, had told me to shut it down, or they shut it down, was the people in Ore who manage it. I put the slide on to inform the, after I called the stations, I kind of got perturbed that they wouldn't help. I put the slide on to inform people, "We got ten more days, and let's, maybe, maybe I can make something happen."
So, if a hundred and fifty's good for thirty days, five hundred would be good for one, five months?
Well, if they, if they matched us, yeah, absolutely, you know.
We still need a permanent solution.
Right, so, but, I mean, if you want to, fifty dollars will help. You know, the thing of it is, I'm here trying to keep it going, and I'm on your side to keep it going.
That's doing by some time, a hundred and fifty, say, right?
A hundred and fifty, okay, if you want to go a hundred and fifty, and, or, and talk to St. Louis County Commissioner down there, what's his name?
Rukavina.
Tom Rukavina.
Tom Rukavina.
I'll be, I'll be seeing him this week, so...
Tell him, tell him a hundred and fifty dollars for you with a hundred and fifty from eight, then you give the hundred and fifty, and that'll, you know, keep Ore going for a month, and by then, Kurt, Kurt Glass, who manages, he'll maybe know kind of what the funding is. Triple RB, Mark Phillips, he said he'd give nine grand to the group, and a lot of that, about sixty-five hundred of his targeted at fixing up the tower, needs paint really bad, it needs, but that's a one-time, they can't do ongoing.
But Triple RB's not gonna throw nine grand into something that's not gonna be staying there, so I think that's a...
Right, and talk to Mark, too. And Kurt is applying to Triple RB right now, or, you know, yesterday or whatever. So, I'm, I hope it wasn't too long and uncomfortable.
Better than thought.
Yeah.
Do we need to form a motion for that?
Yeah, we, we're gonna send money.
I mean, that, that comes out of the budget, out of the budget fund for, for Miniano?
Well...
General.
For a general?
I think that...
General chief.
I think that's what we'd need a motion, because we're spending the money on, on something other than what we are...
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner. The question, you said someone was questioning whether it was even being watched, what?
Channel eight, PBS.
That was a PBS people asking that?
Yeah.
Well, then, I really don't, I kind of wonder their sincerity. I mean, if he'd make a statement like that, why, I mean, why does anyone even watch PBS?
I think he's wrong.
Yeah, I know, but what I mean is, it's kind of, it's kind of odd coming from the...
Manager.
From, from their manager.
Right, right. I'm holding him hostage.
Donations are coming from. Hey, look, we'll see where the donations are coming from, and if it's, out county, St. Louis, and Coochee, I mean, it's obviously coming from...
I know.
I would like to hear from the former and current assistant here, what their thoughts are, if they're willing.
As far as Miniano and Ore?
Yeah, and what the county could do to help or make this continue.
I guess I have to say that a minimal donation from Coochee County is fine, and I agree with Lee in the fact that it's really not our problem, but it is, is the fact that we're gonna lose the local area for TV.
Yep.
So, it's kind of a rock and hard case. It, the tower really needs paint, I, if you would, I have a picture of it, and it's terrible. It, it needs...
Scotty climbs the tower, so he knows.
I mean, that's what you're looking at, it's Gooden Hill, and it really needs paint back.
And Triple RB is aware of this, and they're willing to help.
That's on Gooden Hill?
Yeah, that's the tower that's, that Miniano's on.
I basically haven't come to you before, because I don't come to you with every little problem, or else you guys get pissed at me, but this is, I'm here today because I need your advice.
There's not really a permanent fix.
It's just a bookie, or any...
My contribution is gonna be an ongoing effort.
If, if Rukavina basically goes to the townships around there, and this might happen, and says, "We're gonna charge three dollars a month for every home for taxes," then they would have permanent funding. They used to have that.
A dedicated stream of funding.
Right. And they ask for donations, nobody donates, people don't donate anymore, they're donated right out of existence.
Oh, boy. Oh, it's just with the board.
Brainy, man.
Ask for, for Jim. I know, they gave me their opinion, so...
It is.
That Ore is not funded, right? I mean, that's the bottom line. If they were funded, this whole thing would go away.
Yep.
But county put its weight behind making effort to get donations directly to Ore from citizens that watch it up here. Maybe a newspaper or, or a cab, encourage them. But the problem is long-term funding, if you don't get that...
Long-term and permanent funding.
I, I was just kind of looking at the quote here, and I work with KCCTV, and it seems to me that it's not that people at PBS don't think people aren't watching PBS, they don't think that people are watching PBS over the translators, because people, how people get their media is changing. And so, they probably are thinking that folks watch it more over the internet, or streaming media, or whatever it may be. So, I don't think PBS is saying, "We don't think people are watching your content," they're probably saying how they get that content is changing, and therein lies the problem, the method that is being used now, this over-the-air, is not as prevalent as when, when things were, you know, so those folks that can't get, don't have the technology, or don't, you know, want to use the technology, they're struggling, and this is part of that struggle to kind of keep up with technological change. And so, it seems to me that, I, I follow PBS, not that they don't think everybody's watching, but that they don't understand their audience is broad enough that this would give, give them more access to members that perhaps need their content the most.
You know, it's, I know it's available on satellite, because we get it through, through our...
It's available on cable, it's available on satellite, it's available on streaming, it's not available on Little Fork, because they get it off the translators, it's not available on the Cook cable system, because they get it off of the translator. But the problem is, there's a lot of people that basically don't have the money, especially older people, I see this, that don't have the money to buy satellite, they don't have the money to buy cable, they don't, they're not real computer literate to stream it, plus they don't have high-speed internet, and those are the people that are being hurt. You know, but I agree with you, you're absolutely right. The younger people who have high-speed internet, it's not an issue.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm listening to this, and you want to...
Please identify yourself.
Oh, James, James Such.
Okay, thank you.
And I spoke with Lee about the, the issue a couple of days ago. I sent Alan Harmon, who is the manager at WDSC, and then I talked to him unfold, and basically, he said, "Well, you know, if the tower goes down, you can watch on cable, you can watch on satellite, or you can stream via the internet." Well, cable, where I live, is not an option. They don't have cable there, and the last time I talked to the cable company, they had no plans of extending out there. Streaming on the internet isn't an option either, because the technology is too slow, and they're not in the process of fixing it yet. That means satellite. At this point in time, I haven't purchased a satellite system, and I really don't intend to purchase a satellite system. So, that leaves whatever I can get over the antenna. And when, when we watch TV, we may watch two or three shows a day that come off PBS, which comes through the Ore tower. And, yeah, Mr. Harmon kind of put me in as, as the bad guy, said he, he's holding us hostage, and he's had a contract to operate the system for many, many years, and he's made a lot of money on it, and it's like, I think the contract is for maintenance, it's not for operation.
Boy, you know, we should, you know, we should tell Mr. Harmon, he is a bad guy, but he's our bad guy.
But anyway, so, I'm here to, in support of what Lee's trying to do.
If I would've done nothing, nothing would happen.
Oh, could be out permanent.
Somehow, we need to come up with a permanent stream, funding stream for this thing, it'd be done with, otherwise, we're gonna be back here next weekend, the same discussion, or next year, or something.
I gotta tell you, and then they mentioned the elderly, but there are young families out there with children that have that same issue, and one of the, there's, there's programming that children can watch on that particular, so, I mean, that's, I see it on both ends of the spectrum of my, at least in my district, and D-Boy.
Scott? I was just agreeing, because where I live is the same way, I have no internet.
None?
There's a fiber that goes right by my house that Paul Bunyan put in two years ago that I can't tap into.
By the place, but they won't put it into the place.
Exactly. So, that's out, so much for streaming. I use a hotspot on my cellphone when I have to, but the rates are astronomical. HughesNet, every time there's a cloud or a lightning strike, that's gone, so satellite internet's out. I only have one option as far as watching it. And your monthly satellite bills for satellite TV, like DirecTV, they'd like to start you at a low introductory rate.
We know.
Yeah. Ron said we need a permanent solution, I think you're talking to the commissioner down there, talking to, you know, I, I think people in that area, they can, and maybe will, because of, we've shut it off, maybe they will get involved. If they don't, yes, we can bring it out of Black Duck, yes, we can bring it up by fiber ourself, but then the TV budget gets so expensive, you guys are gonna say, "Gee whiz, let's drop the whole thing," and I hate to see that.
Lee, is that broadcast on the VHF system, or, or a UHF system on it?
Well, in Ore, they pick it up VHF, I'm sorry, in Ore, they pick it up from Hibbing, and from Hibbing, it's retranslated ore to our Captogoma site, then our Captogoma site comes to the falls, and the falls resends it back to, to Ferland, and that's all UHF. Initially, Channel eight in, in Duluth goes out on VHF.
On VHF, yeah.
Right, but then it goes to Hibbing, Ore, Captogoma, here, Ferland.
So, no matter what we do here, Little Fork is not gonna get it anyway, is that what you said?
If PB, Little Fork cable TV system, not the falls, the falls, Minico and the falls brings it up by fiber from, I don't know how they get it, but they bring it up by fiber. Rob, you can tell how Little Fork works.
It's entirely off air. They, they did, Big Top did put fiber in to Little Fork last summer, last fall, and what I understand is being connected, so there will be fiber between the falls and Little Fork, and the channel lineups will be the same, so the need for the antenna pickup in Little Fork will be gone by this fall, that's my guess. But right now, they have no PBS on the case.
I want to thank my secretary, Bethany, that's why everything's proofread really well. She's a good office manager.
She's adult supervision, I guess.
Yeah, she keeps us guys going.
Good job, Ken.
Just, just one last thing, I just for everybody to know, that the county has supported free public TV for years and years, and hopefully, we can continue to do that, I mean, and it's a lot of money to supply, so, if you get calls from people and say, "Well, what are you gonna do about this?", well, we've been doing quite a bit about it for many, many years, and they've, they've had free TV.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
One-time, my, my chief of public. With a match. Right, and you folks send the letter, not for me.
To do a one-time from the TV budget, excuse me for, for Mr. Hervey, but from the TV budget.
Keep us posted, and I mean, if they're, they're willing to work with us.
It fits all within what, what the scope of, of what we've been doing for years and years.
Okay, and that's to do a hundred and fifty?
Yep.
One-time to, to the city of Ore, as a token of our support.
Be matched by St. Louis County, or the public television?
I don't think, you know, St. Louis operates differently, they don't do direct, so I don't, you know, I think we need to, I need, let's talk to Tom before we do that.
Yeah, we'd have to come through the township, probably, but I think what you said, make pass for...
Get Channel eight to pay.
WDSC.